Good evening, and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday, January 17th at 7:00. We're in a regular session tonight, and our first item of business will be to establish the quorum. All council members are present. And our second item of business is to approve the minutes for the meeting held January 3rd, 2017. Okay? We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The minutes are approved. We now move on to communications from council members. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to mention that I was in receipt of a letter from a neighborhood resident, citizen of the West Side, and was expressing some concerns and frustrations regarding the Municipal Arts Commission. And I just wanted to make it public and help everyone out there in TV land, as well as the audience, that there is information on our city website regarding the Municipal Arts Commission that might help explain the commission's role in our community and how they serve the mayor and council. So do consider looking at the City of Athens website, Google, City of Athens, Ohio, and our website is very informative, and that might help some of the miscommunication that's out there in the public. But again, I just wanted to let folks know that that's there. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I'd like to just comment on several items of communication I've received and forwarded on to all council members regarding our West Union Street upgrades that we will be reading about later tonight for first reading. And basically, people wanting, stating that they would like to see the Essence of Athens incorporated into bike racks, or benches, or whatever it is, and not purchased from a generic catalog somewhere, we'll put it that way. So did receive several communications regarding that, and so obviously, people watch us on TV and are interested in our design. So that was good to hear and good to see. So I just wanted to mention that those are coming forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would just like to mention communications from a number of residents of the Near East Side and the Far East Side about their concern over the recent rounds of thefts of parked cars in driveways and on the streets in the neighborhoods, and their concern about what's being done on a local level about that issue.
Councilmember Butler.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Cochran for reminding me that as well, that I too have been receiving emails and communication. Also, I know that the West Side Facebook site has been active in acknowledging some of the break-ins and concerns there with cars. And again, citizens are encouraged to contact the police department with any suspicious activity and any break-in so that we can continue to tackle this. I know the administration is aware, and Chief Pyle has addressed it publicly, and I know our administration is actively engaged in this process. But again, it is a concern and frustrating nonetheless to have your personal belongings rummage through. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll take communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason. Mayor Patterson.
I do. I mean, a lot of it is to echo the communications that council has received. And in particular, I do want to stress, and thank you, Member Butler, I really need to stress this, is that, you know, if your vehicle, or your yard, or your garage, or your shed, it looks like someone has gone through it, or you have had items stolen, please report them. You know, by reporting them, we're creating a track record and can start to see, you know, look at trends that are going on. Plus, it also, you know, patrols can be increased. If we don't hear from them, from anyone who's been impacted negatively through theft or otherwise, then it's kind of hard to enhance police presence in various neighborhoods. A couple other communications that I have, I've received, also received the communication, or communications from individuals wishing to see Essence of Athens features put into the West Union Street improvement, and just know that the city administration in conversations with city planners that, you know, we are tracking that. I would like to see that as well. I think my administration would like to see those enhancements. And then finally, a communication, I've had multiple communications, both just verbal communications, telephone calls, but also email communications from individuals concerned about the schools, the school facilities. In particular, you know, constituents of ours in the city who are concerned with the process.
And I think we'll come back. Are those the announcements, or your communications?
Those are, oh, a couple others, sorry, I was going to say announcements, but there is a one-day delay in trash and recycling pickup this week, and that's something for announcement.
And we'll come back for just a moment to Councilmember Fall.
I just, maybe what we need to do, since people are interested, design people in the Essence of Athens, is to get more copies made. Because I know that the first printing was very limited. I've had several people ask, who are serious design-oriented people doing design and art, they would like one. So maybe we need to look at how many copies we have left, and whether we have to do a reprinting, especially considering we're going into the comprehensive plan process in the next year. That would probably be a good idea. Thank you.
Do we have the document online? Sorry.
I was wondering exactly the same thing, Mayor Patterson, if we have a PDF of it, because there are $50 apiece to re-reduce.
I thought we had at one point in time, but else, we'll certainly reach out to city planner Paul Logan and see if we've got that digitally archived, and we just make sure we're pushing that back out on the city's website.
Okay. Great. Good ideas. Thank you. We'll move on tonight, and the ordinances that we have are for first reading, some of which will need to be suspended tonight. Ordinance 117 is an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations contingent upon deed restrictions for property located at 2 and 4 Dalton Avenue to allow a minor lot split, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
I get the first ordinance of the year. And we talked about this last week. It's dealing with a problem property in the Far East Neighborhood that's been kind of derelict. And so people have come forward to want to do something with it. They require that they would like to split the lot, and in order to split the lot and make it marketable, they need to have a variance on width-to-depth ratio, from what I, so. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 217, an ordinance to rezone 110 West Union Street from a split R3 and B1-zoned parcel to a B1-zone, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We talked about this last week. It's a peculiar parcel on our kind of commercial strip down on West Union, and the property owners would like to do some upgrades and enhancements, and this will help to make the zoning along the whole street much more contingent and logical, and go forward with some of the things that they will have to do.
Ordinance 317 is an ordinance amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make inter-fund transfers. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This, let me just warn everybody ahead of time, 03, 04, and 05 are going to be making motions to suspend the rules, and I'll explain the reasons. So first thing I'd like to do is for, there should be some feedback, Paul. 0317, I moved to suspend the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is, part of this ordinance, there's a utility bill that's due, it has to be paid, so it's to the city's interest to pay their bills, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for suspending the rules on ordinance 317. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
I want to thank you, Madam President. I moved that we adopt 0317.
Second.
Before we take the vote, I'd like to, since this has not been read yet, though we do have copies on our, just probably for the record, I'd like to read at least part of it. In Section 1, the 2017 appropriation ordinance 15016 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $407,605 to Transportation Fund 214 TC 300 for payment to HAPCAP for sale of two GoBuses and one Athens Transit Bus; $49,200 to Transportation Fund 214 TC 500 for Mark's Radio System; $50,000 to Garbage Fund 760 TC 300 for Big Belly Contract; $2,000 to Armory Hudson Fund 582 TC 200 for expenses and utilities; $8,000 to Armory Hudson Fund 582 TC 600 for transfer and increase in the total appropriations by set amounts. This ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage approved by the mayor.
And so we now have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 317. Is there any other discussion or any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 417, an ordinance amending ordinance 12712, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for 0417.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is, excusing my eyes are just a little blurry, in order to post weekly current tax receipts under the new mix, which will be part of the ordinance.
We have a motion and a second for suspending the rules on ordinance 417. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 0417.
Second.
Before we, it's a tie. Before we vote on this, I'd like to read it for the record. Effective January 1, 2017, Section 1 of ordinance 12712 is hereby amended to read as follows: That revenue from city income tax after deduction of 5.41% for the Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, and 5.41% for the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Debt Fund 450, and 2.7% for payment of expenses associated with the Recreation and Community Facility Fund 271, as required under tax levies, shall be allocated directly to the funds as follows: A, 72% to General Fund 101; B, 20% to Street Fund 220; C, 5% to Recreation Fund 270; D, 2% to Capital Improvement Fund 580; E, 1% to Transportation Assistant Fund 214.
Okay. Yes, and Councilmember Butler, you have some comments, or Councilmember Pappy?
Thank you. So under Recreation Community Facility Fund 271, can you refresh my memory regarding which fund that is? So we have the debt fund, Arts, Parks, and Recreation Debt Fund 450, 2.7% for payment of expenses associated with the Recreation Community Facility Fund 271, as required under tax levies.
Okay. So, and it's operating funds?
Okay. That's, I'm just.
For the expenses?
Okay.
And then.
The adjustment is just based on the new.
The new formula.
Okay. And so what we're doing is moving 1% out of the general fund, down to making that, what was 73, down to 72%, and then increasing by 1% the street fund, as explained by the mayor last week. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly express my support for the ordinance in acknowledging that I think it's wise for us to add that extra 1% to the street fund. A complaint that we often receive within the community is that our streets aren't getting enough attention, and that there always is a need with an aging infrastructure for us to tackle unpaved streets. And so I think this is a step in the right direction, so I offer my support for this ordinance. Thank you.
I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Butler on that.
Any other comments or questions from council members or administration?
I'd just say, as Chair of Transportation, we know we need additional funding in our street fund.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second now for adoption. Oh, yes, Mayor Patterson.
Just to help further clarify, with the revenues coming in for the income tax, the change, as was just described by Member Reisner, with the percentages, that's literally coming off the top of the revenue coming in, and then the rest is the distribution into the general fund, recreation fund, capital improvements, transportation, and street fund. So, and again, as was mentioned, I mean, this change from general fund to the street fund is, in large part, a big part of this income tax increase was to make sure we can further improve the city's infrastructure, the streets.
I might add, historically, this is something that's been readjusted from my notes. I have records that we did it in 2002, 2005, we did it again in 2012, and so now 2017. So, you know, minor adjustments to make sure funds are, you know, different accounts are appropriately funded, adequately funded. Okay. We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 417. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The motion carries, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 517 is an ordinance amending ordinance 15116, the 2017 staffing levels and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for 0517.
Second. And the reason for this suspension?
Yes.
Thank you.
The reasons, the notes here is to order to meet the operational needs of the mayor's office, city, so.
And in particular, the Human Resources Department.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for suspending the rules on ordinance 517. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
I make a motion to adopt 0517.
Second.
And let me just read some of it. Section 1, ordinance 15116, authorize staffing levels in the mayor's office is hereby amended to read as follows, I think we all have copies. The major change is the, is the second line, 101 dot 101, General Mayor Administrative Coordinator, which is at an FTE full-time equivalent of 0.75, will increase to full-time equivalent of 1 through 8/3117. All the other positions stay the same. There's no changes.
So we have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 517. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 617 is an ordinance amending ordinance 8616, authorizing sidewalk enhancements on West Union Street, Project 305, and amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. This is first reading, 4617, and we saw drawings for our Union Street upgrade last week. Thank you for sharing those. We discussed at length, and this is one of the issues where the Essence of Athens was discussed as well, when we looked at those drawings. I think for the community, it's more important to note that the cost has increased from the first time this was looked at quite a few months back, because we are looking at improving both sides of Union Street in the construction area there. So of course, that does increase the costs. And as we discussed, we've received a lot of correspondence. People are ready for that to move on, and be improved, and get their parking back, and all of those things. But also, I think we're receiving feedback that suggests they would like to make it as unique a space as we can afford. I think's a good way to say that. So, Member Kostas.
Member Pappy, thank you. And I apologize for missing the marathon session last week, sometimes duty calls, and I was outside town. And I was just thinking about this as I was sitting up here, and I wasn't going to talk about it, but then I remembered, well, I was in Madison, Wisconsin last week, and I had the ability to walk down State Street. It was very cold and snowy, but it had similar features to what this West Union project has. It was very wide sidewalks, planters, benches. The interesting thing was that they did have, there were no, no cars were allowed on the street, and it was just buses. Buses and bicycles were the only things that were allowed to work in that, in that street area. Now, I'm not suggesting anything like that for this project. We don't have that many buses. I think I saw a lot of buses go through. So, I mean, basically, the economic data that I've seen, and I'm just, I just would like to really talk about this for a second, since I didn't have a chance last week, this is, this is going to help the business members, it's going to help the street bring more commerce to the people that are inside those buildings, and it's going to increase the value of all the buildings that are on that street. So as a businessperson, you know, I think it's, I think it's a great project. As a pedestrian and a cyclist, that's, you know, just looking at the design, the only thing I truly worry about is that we're spending $160,000, and we're still not addressing the problem of bikes on the sidewalk. This is something that has been, and maybe it's just me, but I, I mean, before I got up here in council, that a lot of people were asking me, a lot of citizens said, what are we going to do about bikes on the sidewalk? Couple different Monday evenings up here, I've had, I've heard different, different members talk to this subject. I went to an Ayuba meeting and was asked by a business owner what we're going to do about bikes on the sidewalk. So when we put, put this kind of money forth, and we're not having that injected into the conversation, that's, that's about my only, my only, my only pushback. But otherwise, everything else, I'm, I like it.
Member Kostas, I'm a bit confused. What do you mean, bike, you mean riding bikes on the?
Yes, on people riding bikes on the sidewalk.
And so when we put bike racks on the sidewalk, you're suggesting that that encourages that, or just?
No. And let me, you know, and I thought a lot about this, so the people that are riding their bikes through uptown, they're utilizing the sidewalks all over the city. It just happens to be when they get uptown, there's a hole in their infrastructure. They're no longer able to traverse the same way through town that, that they do in the rest of town. And so they don't, they don't stop, they just keep going. And so, you know, I know signage, I know enforcement, there, there's some things, but, but proper street design kind of encourages the, the different modes of transportations to coexist. And, you know, you know, and I think the hardest thing about this for me is, I don't, I don't have the answer.
Right.
I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't know if engineering, or administration, or anybody really has the answer, but I would, you know, at that point, you know, if I was to make any suggestion, you know, do we, do we look at an outside firm that specializes in this type of, you know, transportation, to try to figure out if this is something, if there's a workable solution? And it may not be for this project. You know, we're talking one block. But in the future, as we keep moving forward, is this something that we, you know?
I think there was some discussion about shared, shared lanes, and that you can paint bikes, and, I mean, you can paint it so that people understand that bikes are allowed in a, in the lane of traffic as well. I mean, I bicycle.
Share the road.
Share the road concept, and, you know, I've been in, ridden a bike, lived in a place for a year where I rode a bike every day. And, and when you got to the center part of the city, I mean, everybody had to share the space. Now, there, it was culturally understood. I think part of our issues here is it's not very culturally understood that we would like to see that happen. So I don't know if that is signage, I don't know if it's, you know, the bicycle in the road, I don't know what encourages that. I too believe that we should not have bicycles on the street.
On the sidewalk.
Or on the sidewalk.
Hope not.
On the sidewalk. That's what I meant.
I want them in the street. I don't want them on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so, I mean.
If it has a tire, it should be in the street.
To me, that seems like that's an enforcement issue, but I don't.
Well, it's an education issue.
Education and enforcement, like we did with trash and litter.
Right.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Thank you, President Nisley. Am I correct, Councilmember Kostas, in understanding what you're suggesting is that some cyclists who aren't as comfortable in the street use the sidewalk as a thoroughfare for transportation? That there are some cyclists who are street savvy and feel safe and comfortable there, but there are also other cyclists who do use the sidewalk of Court Street and Union as a thoroughfare because of their fear or lack of comfort on the street? Is that what you're suggesting?
Correct. And it's, and it's not just in that high-volume, high-traffic uptown area, it's, you know, through the neighborhoods.
And our sidewalks uptown are not permissible as a mode of transportation for cycling. Rather, in the neighborhoods or elsewhere, it is permissible to be on a sidewalk, but uptown, with the high density, it's not permissible.
For safety, yes. Yep, correct.
Mayor Patterson.
That is correct. Member Butler, what you just described, that, you know, it's a good educational moment for everyone, at least everyone who's watching, is that in the uptown area, on certain streets, Court Street and Union, and some others in particular, you cannot ride on the sidewalks just because of the, the level of pedestrians that are walking up and down through the uptown corridor. We have spoken with Chief Pyle, as well as Captain Harvey, about initiating, and I don't think this is West Union specific, it's, it's looking at everything in the uptown area, of having a campaign of basically, walk your bike, carry your board. Because it's not just bicycles, it's electronic transportation devices, whatever we're calling these days, they're not hoverboards, but whatever they are, those can't be used on the uptown sidewalks either. So, but we, it is an enforcement issue. You know, we've been talking with Captain Harvey about our parking enforcement, who's on foot, walking up and down the area, to help with addressing that issue. If we have a cruiser that's cruising down Court Street, and they see someone, a lot of times here, the issue is, is such that they're going, you know, north on Court Street, which is the only way you can drive on Court Street, and the individual on the bicycle is going in the other direction. And they're not going to stop the squad car, jump out and chase this person down. Meanwhile, they're half the way down that sidewalk as well. But on the other hand, for parking enforcement to, to help with that, I know, I can speak for my staff, is. for my staff, is that we even address cyclists that might be riding if we're walking up and down Court Street, and I encourage council to do the same. I think that there, that this is a good moment for, for community awareness to where even citizens can say, you know, you're not supposed to be riding that bicycle down the sidewalk. But regardless, it is...
So we're not deputies?
It is against the law to ride your bicycle on the sidewalks on Court Street.
Are you suggesting council members now have police power?
Well, you already have legislative power.
I would, I would also suggest that people need to follow the flow of traffic. You know, there are many times I've been driving north on Court and somebody is actually on a bicycle coming up Court, going south. So, I mean, to me, these are basic rules of the road, and I'm not sure if our regular cyclists who are, pay attention to those kind of things, are the regular offenders or if we're talking about somebody else. I don't know.
I think what we can do is, I appreciate the discussion and appreciate the comments that Councilmember Kostas has made. Sounds like it's education, it also sounds like it's enforcement, it sounds like it's also potentially long-term a design question.
It's design.
And so, I think if we want to come back to this at another time, but for right now, we've had that first reading of the ordinance and we'll move on with the other...
Thank you.
...comments, so.
I would just like to state that I really appreciate Member Kostas bringing that forward.
Good, good discussion. Thank you very much, everyone. Ordinance number 717 is an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. This is one of my favorite ordinances to talk about. So, we have some vehicles that need to be moved on. They're no, no longer needed for municipal purpose. Council can see the vehicles listed and the mileage, and, and we do appreciate administration giving us that, that information. So, that is what...
She looks nice.
Ordinance number 817 is an ordinance authorizing replacement of defective water meters and amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. Quite simply, it was acknowledged in the title, defective water meters. We're looking at authorizing the City Service Safety Director to replace and purchase approximately $200,000 worth. Thank you.
Ordinance 917 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant, and this is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, this is something that we do on a regular basis, and it is for softening salt. And this authorizes, again, our City Service Safety Director to authorize to expend up to $200,000 from the water fund. Thank you.
We'll have now announcements and other business. I do have two announcements from our clerk that let us know that the fifth, there's a fifth Monday this month where we typically do not meet on that fifth Monday, and so the next council meeting will be on February 6th. And that is the time then where we have that public hearing then on the rezoning of 110 West Union Street. And that will be at 7:00 PM on February 6th, just prior to our next council meeting for the public hearing. Are there any other announcements? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I'm sorry, President Isley, I may have misunderstood you. Am I correct that we will be meeting next week, the 23rd?
Right.
Correct, but we will not be meeting the 30th.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's a fifth Monday.
Thank you.
For regular session.
So we will be here next week.
And we will be here next week, so we could probably find out if committees need to meet next week. And I see Finance and Personnel, Transportation, Service of Safety, Planning...
Everybody.
Perhaps, everybody, another full agenda.
Full house.
Okay, good, all right. And, and did you have another announcement, Mayor Patterson?
I do, I do. Just to let everyone know that January 24th at 6:30 PM at the Community Center, the League of Women Voters is hosting a State of the City address. Myself and, and my staff will be there to kind of give a recap, much like I did to City Council, a recap on projects that have been completed over the past year and changes that have been made, but also talking about the future projects for 2017 and future endeavors for 2017. So, everyone's welcome to come.
I have a question. Is the school issue an appropriate discussion item there? I, I'm just bringing it up because I wonder if people will come to want to speak to that, but would you be willing to speak to that?
What I am willing to do is entertain the conversation about the city's facilities and, you know, if anyone wants to talk about it, I will certainly be there to listen and certainly share my take on city schools. But, note this, is that, that falls under the Athens City School Board and their decision-making process, the city, city administration has little say other than to talk about the impact that changes can have on the city of Athens, but it's not in my wheelhouse to...
I know someone asked me that question directly, well, can't the city, you know, say something to that? And I explained to them...
We can say.
Things can be said.
We can say, exactly.
And note that things have been said, but that's...
Okay. All right. Any other announcements? We do have one other item of business, and I believe Councilmember Kostas has a motion for us for approval of a commission member.
President Isley, thank you. Yes, I would like to make a motion, there's, to appoint John Valantor to the Historical Preservation Commission, and this is filling a vacancy that was, that was on the board. If, if I was building my dream team of Historical Preservation Commission, I would want to have John Valantor on there. He was one of the primaries for RVC Architects until he retired last year, and, and I've, I've worked with him personally. He's very passionate, he knows his stuff. You know, I can't say enough nice things about this man.
So you're making the motion then?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for your service in advance.
Everybody who volunteers for these positions, got a big giant thank you.
I do have a comment. So, of course, we all know John's work and, and, you know, his reputation in the community, and so you clarified something in my mind that he is now retired. Because there has been a lot of involvement with projects and things over the years, there was just a question in my mind whether that would be a good fit. But at this point, you're saying he is fully retired.
Correct.
So we could benefit from his knowledge and expertise on our historic commission. If he was still employed running, you know, and part of RVC, I might have a different feeling about that, but...
He has tons of time.
Fully retired. Wants to give back to his community, I think that's wonderful.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval of John Valantor to the Historic Preservation Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me, and thanks from all of us towards that service. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. I'll offer the opportunity briefly if anybody wants to speak to anything. And what we'll do next is, we will have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining. And what we do is, we will make that motion, we'll break for five minutes so that we allow the press opportunity to ask questions of council members. We'll close the doors for executive session. We will come, we will open the doors after the executive sessions ended, and then we will adjourn the meeting. It sounds complicated, but we're basically coming back to adjourn in a public manner after that executive session is over. So, may I have a motion to...
I so move.
During the executive session?
To have executive session with all members of council, the president, the law director, the mayor, and the safety service director. For the purpose of collective bargaining.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then I will take the roll call vote. Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappy?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Yes.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostas?
Aye.
And Councilmember McGee?
Aye.
Okay. So we're in favor, and it is 7:40, so we'll have a few free minutes till 7:45 for the press to talk with council members or staff. Thank you.